All right, I've got 5 o'clock on the hour. I'd like to call this meeting to order April 27, 2023. I'd like to ask Brother Coleman for a word of prayer.
Brothers by our heads. Father God, we just want to thank you for tonight, Lord. We thank you for another meeting in this month, Lord. And we thank you for these that press the way out and rain, Lord. We just give you the praise and we ask you to just be in Hartford tonight, Lord, in our meeting, Lord, that we get an understanding of all things that we did. And, Lord, we just want to thank you for each and every one of the officials and mayor tonight, Lord, and these that press the way out. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Before you have the minutes of the last meeting, after being reviewed, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
All right, all right. Hold on. Give me that pen. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side. Motion carries. Tara, do you have anything to bring forward?
Nothing.
All right, before you have the financial reports, bank statements, income statements, and account payables, after being reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to accept the financial reports.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm new, so I'm just curious, on the like check register, what is the refund to UMS account? There's like 12.
That's where people have moved out of Hartford, and that is the leftover of their deposit after their balance has been paid in full.
Okay.
Yep.
Good question. Glad you're looking. I had a first and second down here, I do believe.
Yeah.
First by Tony.
Yeah.
Who's seconded?
Adele.
Mary Bell.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like side. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have action in old business ordinance 2023-01 on the business license. This is the second reading, and I will open the floor for discussion here. I'll give everybody a brief little bit to say what they want to say on this ordinance briefly, and then the council, I'll ask if you all have anything to say on this, and then we'll have to, if we have a motion, we will do a roll call vote. So if anybody wants to go first on this ordinance?
Well, I don't care to go first.
Okay.
I'm Sherilyn Ward, and I'm co-owner of Soreheads, Hips and Sundrys over here, and I've read the ordinance, and it actually, you know, I think it's very fair, the way that it is worded and the way that it reads. I've done some figuring, and I know the main problem for us is we feel, and I'm not trying to be ugly, but Karen and I feel very unappreciated because we pay property taxes, we pay inventory taxes, we pay our employee taxes, we pay what, I mean, all those things, and, you know, plus our business license that we have, you know, we've got a brick and mortar store, so we have all of our expenses as far as electricity and heat and all of that also. And I'm, we're not trying to be ugly, and we don't mind food trucks coming in, but we just hate that it's not fair, okay? When the food trucks are here, if it's like it is right now, and they pay $75 for a business license for a year, just like we do, they could be here every single day for 21 cents, 21 cents a day. We can't open our place for 21 cents a day. The way it's written in here, it's still fair. $100 a month, if they come every single day of the month, that's still only $3 a month, I mean, $3 a day per month. We would go somewhere and set up for $3 a day. When you go set up at a, you know, like at a fair or something like that, you pay a much larger fee than that. So we're not, we're not saying don't have food trucks. We, we like them. We love eating things from food trucks, but we just want a little bit of equity, and that's what we're looking for, Mayor. Do you have something you need to say, Karen?
Does anybody?
Glenn Johnson with the Culpa Cafe. Just some history. We came here five years ago, did a coffee shop. I went in the lot, run on, didn't know anybody in town much. My wife's from here, I'm not, but I'll say this. This city actually approved a coffee shop downtown to do a fundraiser for a school here in town. Being from out of town, that was kind of a slap in the face, I'm like, damn, okay. And let me back up a little bit. I was on the Economic Development Committee for Hartford for a while, dropped that because right after the coffee shop. Because I'm like, you really not trying to help businesses come into town if you're going to call from Central City, which were friend of ours, that own that coffee shop, have them parked right in front of their shop, and then these people walk from here instead of coming to see me?
Right.
And what kind of sense does that make? I don't know if I need to say anything else for the rest of the night, because if you own a business, let me do a portable in front of you. Tell me what you think, because I can do portable printing very easy. It's easy, because you can do it online, most of it anyway. What kind of sense does that make if we're trying to grow Hartford? Secondly, it says the environment that, well, when I opened it, I had people coming to me as I was doing the remodel and said, yeah, I don't know if you're gonna make it here, dude, I mean, nobody, you know, I mean, it's just, it's tough, people different. I'm like, you know, I'm gonna do it, people don't drink coffee, and Lord willing, I'm gonna make a living, right? But then when you start seeing things like this take place, you go, dang, not only are they not helpful, right, supporting your business, they actually kicking you in the knees when you ain't looking. I don't know, so, I'm not well spoken, not very educated, but common sense, what's the purpose of the city and the city committee to businesses, right? If I'm responsible to you for things, what do you do for me besides kicking you in the legs, taking them out from under me? I don't understand that. I get frustrated with that kind of stuff. And common sense and logic, and dang, it's a small town, we all want to be neighbors, and then you're gonna pull somebody in from another county? Direct competition, wouldn't like, it wouldn't like Slickback doing barbecue downtown and I sell coffee. It wouldn't like that. It's coffee, I always stick it right back in your face. I mean, that's a fight. To me, that's a fight. Now, Terry and Pete won't do it again, because they didn't know that I was running this, but they're friends of mine, went to school with them. They apologized. How embarrassing is that, right? I mean, it just sets up all this stuff. Now, so, I don't have as much time to give you, I've got a couple things, now that you got me rolling. So if, so what happens if we do food trucks, okay? I have no clue when they're coming. I'm prepping for my day, right? And then they show up on my parking lot, everything that I've cooked, prepped for that day, you can't, I don't sell it for the next day, right? Some of it you can't, some of it you can. So now, not only they take business, I've lost product in business, right? Had to send people home because it's slower. I don't know when they're coming. I heard that, well, we do that because, we love wanting to come in because of nonprofit and give people variety. You ever stop to talk to them? There's Annie's Pretzels, right, I mean, from here to that door from my shop. I want to go talk to them. Hey, I got a place I can rent you. Oh, we don't have to pay rent, we just come sit in the parking lot. Oh, okay. Well, you raise money for it. Oh, no, we're just doing business. You sort of mean, so who's checking if you're gonna do this? Who's, who's keeping them in check, paying the dues, doing it the right way?
Well, that's something I will say, and that's a problem that we're gonna have either way with this process, however it is voted. I don't know who's gonna be able to do that. I mean, my police force is tied up pretty regularly, so I understand, but who is gonna police that? That is a good question. Who's gonna be responsible to police that?
Well, if I don't pay taxes, somebody comes to see me.
Exactly. But who's gonna be responsible for that? Because should that be, should that be on my police department, though? Should that be with my office staff in here?
Maybe that should be written into the law, somebody should figure it out. You're being a media, we should have talked about how to do it.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. No, I get it, I get it, but that was just a, that was just a question that we're still trying to figure out. I'm not saying I'm against it or anything.
Let me give you another, this one's even better, then I'll stop, because I can go on. I'll be 10 minutes worth of notes, and I'm done. Here's a bigger one for me. What are we giving to the next generation? Here's an example, right? Not even as council people, but just as a group of adults to the teenagers and young adults, right? What are we doing for them? I have people that I've hired don't even know how to use a broom. I'm teaching them how to ice and cinnamon rolls. Could not make Rice Krispies this morning, then I would sell, they were too flat. No one's at home teaching them. But if I wasn't there, I've got eight people on staff, probably do another eight at the other location. That's a lot from a little independent guy.
It is.
Right? You look at the payroll, and I tell you.
Yep.
Who's doing anything for this next generation? This food truck come in here, there's two people that are not even local from Annie's. I don't know where they're from, Millbrook Avenue, I think. They're not helping, my people leave, I pay them on Friday, they leave, they got money in their pocket, they go places here and continue to grow and build. Annie got in their truck, took off with my six bucks. Who's giving it?
Right.
Secondly, who's taking care of those, I've got another, she gets out of school, she's coming to me full time. Is Annie's doing that? Shogun's doing that? That's the bigger responsibility. I don't care about their fees and their taxes, all that crap. I'm not gonna be here in 10, 15 average guys, 75 years old, it's gone, right? But what about my son's 21, my daughter's 19? What about Annie that's going to college? Audrey that we just hired out of school, right? Help her to get ready to go to college? Who's doing that?
Right.
They just can't run. So it has to be our responsibility as citizens, let alone council.
Right.
For those things.
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on this ordinance as well?
I just want to say, Brian Wilson on Slickback Barbecue. I've been, I've been running food truck longer than, I am, I think, almost seven years now. I've seen it all, done it all. I understand his frustration, completely get it, and that's why I can sit here and say that, since, and I think you all would probably agree, since the day that you all had sore heads, have you seen me down there by the radio station?
Yeah, but...
No, I mean, have you seen me down there? Since y'all been there?
Slickback?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. You've been there. There you have.
At the radio station?
Yes, yes, sir.
When?
Well, you have been, because, oh, absolutely.
You should have been in the last...
Well, I don't know if it was you, but it was your truck.
Right. It's been, we've been open for four years. Yes.
Okay, well, I was down there, I've been going down there for seven years, but I have not been going there for quite some time now.
Probably the last maybe couple years, but before then.
Well, regardless, in the business world here, it's about competition. We have expenses, and I know the expenses on the other side of it, too. I have expenses just like you have expenses. And I know like he's speaking about, I contribute to the county. I contribute to the county's youth. I know that, dude, I can attest to that, I can say that, dude. But the thing that we can sit here and argue about all we want, it's about being respectful to the people that are around you, and that's what I'm trying to get at with, with Annie Anne's Pretzels. The reason why they're there is because of the permission of the lot owner. If they don't give them that permission, they can't be there. So that comes back to the people that own that part of the lot. If that, because I was asked by Dollar General one time, come up there, and I said, did you get this cleared by the spingers? Because if they don't tell me yes, then I don't go.
So who gives Shogun's permissions to park in front of the library?
I have no idea, I haven't been there, they've never...
The library.
The library. But that's a city street, they don't own that.
That's a state highway.
What?
It's a state highway.
State highway.
Yeah, I mean, I...
So anybody can park there?
Which we have no control.
Yeah, we don't have no control over state highway.
And that's, that's the other thing with, okay, Signature Healthcare, they call, they ask if they can, if you can come down there. We're on their parking lot, we're on their property. It's, and I'm just saying, like, I go there every other week or something like that. I mean, they have somebody there.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Most, and they have barbecue places, they have everything that you can think of, and there's nothing I can do about it.
Can I ask you a question? Are you ever inspected by the health inspector? How often are you inspected? Is your letter in the window?
My letter?
Yeah, your grade.
Your grade.
The grade?
Uh-huh.
We get a paper, we don't get a grade letter, I mean, we get graded, but we don't have a letter that we put out. It's an inspection sheet that we have to have in our truck with us.
So you don't have to have your grade posted, because we were told you have to have a common...
Because you're...
And then that's my question is, I mean, are these other trucks inspected?
They're supposed to be, they even have their licenses. I mean, I am, I can tell you that I am, I get checked, I probably get checked more than you all do. You get checked every six months, right?
Yes.
I get checked probably 10 times a year.
It doesn't matter, they just pop up.
I get checked at least 10 times a year. When I go to Owensboro, I get checked at an event, Fourth of July, I get checked, I get checked, I bet you 10 or 12 times a year.
So tell me, when you go to Owensboro, do you go, do you have to pay anything when you go to Owensboro?
You have to pay your whatever.
Business license.
You have to pay your business license.
Okay, but do you have to pay, since you have employees with you, do you have to pay their...
Payroll tax.
Tax over there?
Well, their occupational tax.
I think you're supposed to.
Anything like that?
If I, if I was to go to hair in Owensboro, I would have to have a separate business license and occupational tax.
Within Owensboro, they changed the rules for food trucks, because nobody was getting their license anymore, because they were charging $800 a year to have a food truck, and they changed it all, because they couldn't get food trucks to come in Owensboro, because the way, the prices that they had for them.
Right. But see, $100 is...
All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, it has nothing to do with, well, I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to say that...
No, I understand.
The owner of the lot...
Does anybody else have anything at all? If not, we're gonna go to the council's discussion, if anybody has anything to...
One more thing, he made a good point, and I know him, and I talk sometimes, the respect thing. So you're gonna pass this, like, you know, every city's got food trucks, right? So how do we do it wisely? How do we do it, how do we do it in a manner that you don't bring in something that's direct competition? That's difficult.
Right.
Because...
And I don't think any of the council or myself is not looking out for the best interest for our businesses. I see, I see it and hear it, so I understand that as well, I do. Does anybody have any discussion on the council?
I feel that it's absolutely worth revisiting. What's in this current ordinance, I'm not in agreement with, but I think it's more ample time for more discussion. It's okay, I believe in equity, I believe in, you know, comparable occupational tax, different things like that. I'm not opposed to raising the rates. I, I don't like the idea of limiting the amount of time that someone can come here and providing all of Hartford citizens freedom of choice. Maybe, I don't know if there was a city calendar to schedule this food truck, so we just know when people are coming, make yourself know. But I think it needs to be more discussion about making it equitable, but also fair to all citizens.
I will point out, Stacia, it doesn't limit the number of times.
The health department does.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, the ordinance.
Well, I thought based on the fee, it said so many times per year, based on this fee or...
If you pay $100 a month, you can come as many times as you want.
Okay. Well...
You just can't stay at a whole location past two weeks, unless you leave for three days and then come back.
That makes sense.
So who's getting $100?
The city.
City.
But you're complaining about you giving equity into your business, so if I'm giving them $100, how's it going back to you? How's it gonna help either way?
What we're saying is that if you have to do that every month, then you might think, hmm, okay, maybe only go five times a month instead of going...
It's not gonna change my mind, is it?
Well, you also...
It's gonna change yours.
Absolutely not.
But you are also local.
Because I feel like the people in the county should have that choice to pick different things to eat. I don't want McDonald's or Burger King all the time. I enjoy having Slickback sometimes. It's the, and then if we stay local, our money does go back into the county. I shop a ton in the county for supplies and stuff for our trailer. I try to stay local. I pay everything we need to pay, all of our fees are up to date every week. We still get inspected by the health department.
But we're not talking about just local, we're talking about other people who come in from other places, and nothing stays here.
Because it's not the same as all of our local people staying local, but I guess they choose to go to different places because they're, again, offering their food to our county.
Well, and they are. Those places are invited by someone that either lives or works in Hartford, so...
What about a different rate for outside county people?
That's, I mean, that's, again, worthy of discussion.
So, Mayor, if I may, so I have, I have an opinion, and kind of like Stacia, as this ordinance is written, I'm a no, because I think we're, let's just face it, we're all here targeting one group, and that's the food truck industry, you know? We're not talking about, you know, the flea markets, we're not talking about peddler license, we're targeting the food trucks. I feel like, and I brought it up during the very first reading of this, whenever this ordinance first came out, we have like, we have eight categories in this ordinance. Well, four of these categories have a yearly fee. We're offering a yearly fee. So I feel like that the ordinance ought to offer a food truck a yearly fee, not a monthly fee, not a $50 a month or $100, you know, if you want to come twice a month. We, I say a monthly fee. Also, as reading, just for instance, I have, there's been a contractor in my neighborhood this week working on a house. I don't see anybody in here complaining about this contractor, you know? We're targeting food trucks. I kind of looked at Sorehead, I looked at your guys' menu, just for instance, you know, Slickback has a barbecue, they do barbecue, you guys have one option that would maybe conflict with Slickback, you guys have that Hartford barbecue sandwich, you know? I don't see anybody's menu that you guys are doing pretzel bites or pretzels or anything like that, so I don't see the competition for Annie Anne's Pretzel Truck coming in here.
It's money, speed.
Mr. Rinko, we're not talking about competition. That's the American way, okay? That's the free enterprise system. We understand that. What our problem is, is it's not, we pay so much money, and Karen and I have done everything we can to, you know, try to give the city ideas to make it a better place to be.
That's my thing. When you all do city things, who do you come to? Do you go to those food trucks, or do you come to the brick and mortars that are sitting around town? Who do y'all go to?
When people want donations for ball festivals, when people want donations for their city activities, when people want donations for the football team or the swim team, who do they donate?
We have no control over that.
Yeah, we don't have any control, we're, just like Mary Bell was saying, we don't have any control over who comes and visits you for a donation.
No, no, but I'm saying, though, if something is going to the food, the brick and mortar place, they don't donate food trucks.
Do you not see that maybe some of these organizations are coming in for food or for fundraisers, right? They make a percent, we've been contacted, I've been contacted for a food truck to come in for, to do a, an event to support Ellis Park renovations, you know? So, so the people are coming in, I don't know what you said back there, but, you know...
Well, my, my point is, like, when the city is gonna do something, like the city, like you all are gonna put on a festival, who do you come to first?
Well, I don't know, I'm new to the commission, so I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, because, I mean, they've come to us, they come to all the clients downtown, they go to the Lynn, they go to the...
Do we ask you for money when we do that?
They want us to put our, they want, not necessarily money, but our work, I mean, planning the, being a, being...
We ask people if they want to be involved, I know that, but do we ask anything out of the ordinary from you? We don't ask you for money. We, you know, if we're gonna have an event, we'd like to have the stores open, but we keep mandates. Did you do that?
No, but can, you know, it's like, will you all have a fire pit? Will you all, you know, we went in with the other businesses, and will you all pay for the bouncy house? We've made quite a few donations in, for the city.
And we appreciate that.
And y'all have been a really good help. Yes.
I had mentioned this prior, but due to the fact that I missed last month's meeting, I don't know if it was brought up or discussed or anything, but this is not my idea. I rented a shop in Owensboro Mall, and it was called a filler store, which means that at any time, a full-time store could come in, they would bump into another location. Because of that, a full-time store was $5,000 a month, I couldn't afford that. But a filler store, I only had to pay $1,000. But the problem was, is when I had a filler store, I had to turn in my receipts for the month, and based on the amount of revenue I brought in, I had to pay the mall 10%. So what I'm suggesting is that these food trucks that are coming in from out of county, and I believe you're in county, right? Food trucks are coming in out of county, then they would have to, and this would be difficult to monitor, I understand, but the amount of money that they revenue, that the city would charge them X amount of percentage based on their sales for that month. It would be hard to regulate, and it might not be a perfect idea, but if they came in, they did $2,000 per month, well, then 10% of that $200 would go to the city to help our community grow. That might be an option, I don't know.
Thank you.
Well, and just to finish my train of thought here, and the reasons, the reasons why I'm not against this ordinance, but as this ordinance is written today, also, kind of like the mayor said earlier, how are we gonna police it? If you read the ordinance right now on page nine in A above, it states, it shall be the duty of the code enforcement officer, okay, the Hartford Police Department, designate city representatives, who's that gonna be? The mayor, and/or the city attorney to enforce the provisions of this ordinance, and they're called the enforcement staff. Well, I don't remember us ever discussing having an enforcement staff. I don't know if this was from the previous ordinance, or if this was, you know, discussed, you know, outside of the city council meeting, because I don't remember us discussing this at the very first meeting.
We didn't.
That's been the ordinance since 2010. The only addition was that underlined part, and that was Mary Bell's notes to me, asking for that to be defined.
Okay. And then my last is, kind of like you brought up, Ms. Ward, is about being in a certain distance from a brick and mortar or an established restaurant. I think we should have that. I know some of the, like, Owensboro, for instance, they have 100 feet. A food truck or a trailer, a mobile unit can't sit up within 100 feet of an established restaurant. There's nothing in this ordinance that protects you guys from that. So out of Slickback, he says he doesn't sit up close to your restaurant, well, that's just, I guess, him being polite and respecting your business, doesn't want to take anything with you. Now... Now, I don't, I don't know about Annie Anne's, you know, in the IGA parking lot or anything like that. I don't know the distance there, but I think that needs to be added in this ordinance, as this ordinance is written right now. So those are the main subjects, reason why I will vote no on this ordinance tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the ordinance of the 2023 business license.
I'll make the motion.
I have a first. Mary Bell. I don't have a, I don't have a second, then that's.
I'll say.
All right, I have a second by David. Roll call vote, please, Lisa.
No.
Yes. That, he's already, he made the motion, so you won't have to count that, right?
Right.
Well, he gets to vote. Stacia?
No.
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 Okay, motion. Okay. Okay, motion. Does it need to come in a form of a motion to revisit the writing based on our discussion? Or do we need? Um.
Mayor, if, can I speak with you for a moment?
Who?
Can I speak with you for a moment?
Me.
As a person on that.
Yep. Did you copy the concurrents or the ones that are?
Oh, yeah, I got some, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I gave some to, I gave all my blank ones to Dan.
Okay. Okay.
Now, I was attempting to have a sidebar. I wanted to make sure that, I wanted to explain to the mayor for, say, his motion, because it brought this up.
Yep, so basically, just for the public's knowledge, if she's making this motion, it'll be, it'll have to go into another ordinance, first and second reading as well. And I highly recommend that we do it right, because it is a process to, and we've wasted a lot of time on this. So I do want to see what we can do to accommodate everybody in itself, whether it's the food trucks or our businesses here in Hartford. Everybody's important to us, so. Is she withdrawing her motion? No, she's not withdrawing the motion, all right. And did I wear it right? Do I need to make it formal?
Well, if the motion fail, if, if the ordinance failed, if you're wanting to bring it again, a new ordinance, then basically what needs to happen is you can, you don't have to make a motion to discuss more unless you want to, I mean, you just want it. But that's what I was trying to explain, is that, you know, since this particular ordinance is issued, the way to bring it up again would be a new ordinance with two readings and getting it published and that thing. So it's, it's a process of having maybe like, just discussions on it and then telling the draft, contract it, okay?
Okay. So I do understand, yes.
I apologize. May I suggest something? If we're looking to rewrite, in my words, revisit, could I suggest that maybe there be a side meeting or a meeting with some owners, even food trucks, let us all sit down together?
Absolutely. I, I don't have a problem with that. I think it's, I think it's the best happy medium in far as like what you said, yeah. So, so far, what you said about out of town, a hundred percent get it. I, I see it.
There's a lot to be said. I mean.
Right.
I'm not sure who they are, and I apologize.
We're fan bellies.
I'm, I'm. I, I like this guy. I don't even know him that well, but I like his food. I've been to his restaurant.
Right.
You see, with me, I'm not looking to kick anybody out. So what can we do?
Right.
Just sit down and.
Well, let, let the council sit in and talk about it too, Glenn.
Sure.
Because we all have some concerns.
If you had interviewed a couple of us and let us throw the ideas on paper, then y'all made them wrong.
I'm just going to note that the council can't discuss this outside of an open meeting.
Right, it has to be public forum.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, um.
I say we take.
Might I suggest a committee?
Yeah, I am gonna, I'm going to form a committee. I would like to put, um, let's see, you can't have no more than two.
Unless you call a special call.
Unless you call a special call, okay. Mary Bell and Stacia, I'd like you to sit on the, um, committee as well, as far as Brian and, what's y'all's names here?
I'm Daniel.
Daniel?
I'm Henny.
Okay, well, y'all, you know, okay. And, um, soreheads and cup cafe and Brian. We'll do that as a committee. Stacia, one would be good.
How, how many people are you appointing to this committee? Two councils?
Two councils. You can't have no more than that unless we have a, a special call meeting. So that's, I mean, we can have a special call meeting on it if you, if you would like. Well, and, and then our guests. And then they can come here, just, and that'd be the only topic that, I mean. That might be the best option.
I think having, I think your best bet would be to have two appointees from the council, meet with the representatives from the community, and come back to the council with some recommendations and your summary report. And then you often discuss it in open session when that happens. I think that probably is more.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm going to give you.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So you got all the names?
Yes.
Is everybody good with that?
Thank you. I know you're straight.
Okay. And we do hear, I appreciate everybody voicing their opinion on it, I mean. I will say, maybe we could assign a sheet with your all's names and phone numbers to coordinate with you before you leave. And I could send out a group text message. I will say, I have another job and I work Monday through Friday and don't get home until five o'clock, so it would have to be after hours. I would like, I'd like for you to head that up if you don't care. Okay. And you get the numbers and get with Mary Bell and y'all set a date on that. Okay, thank you all. Okay, this is something that we have to do every year. On new business, it would be the reading ordinance number 2023-02. This is the financial budget that we have to set every year. So if everybody's had time to look at it as well, I'll ask for a motion or any corrections that you might see for, for the, for most.
We just make a motion. We just need to read.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have to have a motion. This, this is just the first reading. I'm sorry.
You just need to read.
Hmm?
Need to read it.
Yeah, just read your budget.
You want to have somebody read it out loud?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, Mary Bell, will you read that out loud?
Okay, I know what it's got.
Our new, uh, 2023-02, an ordinance, an ordinance adopting the City of Hartford, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year 7/1/23 through June 30/24, by estimating revenues, resources, and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um. Let's see. Um, Chief, do you have anything to bring forward?
Yes, our new guy comes in tomorrow.
Okay, we're gonna, our, our new, uh, guy that will be sent to the academy, Dallas Dukes, he will be getting sworn in tomorrow. So he's done all of his first and second phases. So we're going to try to get him on the streets a little bit to see the inner works of law enforcement. So be wishing him the best as he goes through the academy.
What time is it going to be tomorrow?
Twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock, here and see him? Or, is it okay?
Yeah, yeah, everybody's fine with that. Um, Chief Griffin, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was talking to our, you know, the new car truck. We traveled up to Applewood last week and did a mild inspection on it. Minor stuff, nothing, nothing made wrong. Got an email yesterday, it was scheduled for shipment to Shelbyville. That's where it goes to shop there and you scroll through it again, because they drop it from Appleton all the way down here. Road test, so they go to Shelbyville, get the test to the end, get some stuff installed on it while it's there. Roughly, we got started. I got a phone call. The truck's at Shelbyville right now, so it's, hopefully by mid, you know, next week we will have it here. And I would like to have opened up the car station so everybody can look at it and, uh, check it, check it out.
All right, I appreciate everyone's heart.
Sounds good.
Appreciate everything you done.
Oh, and by the way, I'm really glad y'all bought this truck when we did it. Uh, I've just been hauling around to see what that truck's actually worth today. It's a little over seven hundred thousand dollars.
And what was our, what did we pack then?
Five sixty. Not going to ask this up for a little day. If we would turn ourselves, we can make money some dollars.
Thank you, Chief Griffin. Uh, Ronnie's here with us. Ronnie, would you like to give us an update?
Hello, I'm Ronnie, by the way.
This is our code.
I mean, there's no meetings, but I got some, like, kind of reports, minutes, if you're liable.
Thank you.
I'm trying to learn all the codes. I, I don't want to go do nothing that I shouldn't be doing. I, I experienced, uh, some of the yards are high. I usually go out and hang red tags, get three or four days or take care of them. I am working on the list of the abandoned properties so some letters can be sent out about the taxes. I spoke with, about a few of those, what needs to be done, because I'm being told some of them have been set for seven or eight years and nobody doing anything with them. So hoping to get some of those taken care of.
A good job would be good. There's several. I think, um, and I've, I've spoke to Tara about this, and, um, if y'all have any, if y'all have any that you would like put on that list, I highly recommend that you reach out to, um, Ronnie, and then me and Tara's going to get together on some of these.
We've had a few years where the deadline was missed, so this is a good time.
Yeah, so it's, it's something that we need to.
The letters have to be mailed out by May 15th, if mine is fair.
Yep. What's the best way to get in touch with you, Ronnie?
Uh, 270.
Uh-huh.
256-7513.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seven five one three?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, anything I can do for y'all, reach out. Be more glad to.
All right, thank you, Ronnie.
I do have one question I, one I'm working on, but abandoned lots, are those under different stipulations for the grabs? No houses, just lots?
Generally, I believe under the ordinance, an abandoned lot is something that has delinquent taxes for a period of time, and I'd have to look at the ordinance to refresh my memory. But usually it's no maintenance and, and or delinquent taxes for a certain period of time. It's in that ordinance. I'll have to look at it.
And Jeff, or Lisa, you might, you need to get her the information on the committee that was formed for code enforcement, or it's already. And Ronnie, I'd like to have, I'd like for y'all to have a meeting pretty soon with the committee. And you said that we'd have to change the ordinance if we changed the fines, is that correct? Or is it the policy?
Yes, no, the, the fines are set by ordinance. So if you change the amount of the fines and things of that nature, we'd have to pass amended ordinance.
Okay, so I would like that to be something that this committee looks at as well. You know, anybody can pay the twenty-five dollars and just maybe not clean, clean the mess up. So that's something, she'll get you the information and, um.
There is, I may, or I will say, and I think I saw David with, with handout, Kentucky League of Cities offering a code enforcement.
Yeah, I've showed her that.
Okay, I was going to say, it's very, very helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I've showed her that as well, so. All righty.
Mayor.
Yes.
Can I get a copy of that?
Of what? Of the ordinance?
Clay Street property.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll get them to you. All right.
We, we need to make the fines enough that people notice they're paying it, four and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, I mean.
It's like the Clay Street property, they cleaned it up for a day, then the next day they.
Yeah, so we'll get that information. Oh, but that's the three houses that are run down. All right. They maintain the yard, but the house, the roofs are falling in. All right. Does anybody else in the public have anything to bring forward? If not, I'll ask our council for roundtable discussion. Mr. Rinco, do you have anything to bring to the table?
I do. Stacia and I, we met with Jeanne Anne.
Jeannie, Jeannie.
Jeanne Anne, so with, with Grad this, this week, or talking about our, the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant that we are trying to apply for to renovate Ellis Park. I've been collecting, we've been collecting some estimates, still have a few out there, but we're, we're going to apply for a 50-50 grant. We don't have to put cash in the game versus.
In-kind labor.
Yep, in-kind labor, forced labor estimates and, and all that stuff. But, so the total we came up with, with all of our estimates and improvements is like a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. And that's to include lighting, field, work on the baseball fields, fencing, playground equipment, resurfacing the basketball court, and I think there were some other things that we've already done, like bases, and just some, pretty much some cleanup and fixing some stuff that is there. So we, we have a, a couple hit, a couple things that we had to do, which we've already been working on. We needed to get the deeds to Ellis Park. I went over, got those. We had to take pictures of the things that we're requesting to be repaired or replaced. We had to take pictures of those, show those. And then there's also, we're, we're kind of confused on, uh, public, I guess, participation. Uh, there's a couple gray areas there, one being social media, one being, uh, there's a, a concurrence form that we can get citizens or people that are playing on the park, using the park, if they agree or disagree with the improvements. So we, we've already started doing some of those. We've been collecting some of those around. But her thing is, of course, the more public that are interested and, and agree with, will, will better help our chances on getting this grant approved.
So about a year ago, and here again, this is one of the things that I helped do for the city. We did a public thing for Ellis Park where we, through citizens, I even stood out in the rain and begged people to come in and talk to us about what they wanted to see there at Ellis Park. And so there should be some kind of paper or something somewhere that lists things that the public wants, so things that the public approved that we talked about when we were there.
And there it is.
Yeah, there's the quote, and it's actually still on the Hartford city website. The Ellis Park improvement there, too, that is still there.
And it, and it was a part of a plan that we had in, we had an engineer come. We got estimates. Post-COVID, that estimate doubled, so we are now piecemealing the project because of cost. And Grad has this grant that's willing to help us, so we're aware of what the community wanted. We're trying to meet in the middle what the community wants and what the city can afford, plus the grant money, so.
And anybody that lives here, I'd be able to fill out one of these forms.
And I was going to say.
If you live in Hartford.
Uh, if you live in Hartford and you would like to, uh, show your support, we ask for this concurrence form. You should basically fill it out that you agree or don't agree with the Ellis Park project. This, they submit all these for the grant. It just shows that the city's buy-in. And once I get okayed, he mentioned it, I'm going to see if we could do social media and count our likes, shares, and comments as part of the support.
and count our likes, shares and comments as part of the support for the Ellis Park project.
Thank you.
Uh, some of the thing, I give Jeff kudos, he threw me in there, but he's gotten all the estimates. Um, I'm gathering the history of Ellis Park, that's, goes in the grant application as well. And I've reached out to Chad Schatmeyer, which is a Hartford, Ohio County historian. He's getting me something together. And just once we get the go-ahead, I'll share on social media what I can. Is there anything else, Jeff?
Uh, talk about the, uh, the business meeting, we had to have a.
Okay, seven.
Public hearing.
Yeah. Uh, it has to be announced seven days prior and we're going to try to make it our last May meeting. We'll let the public know, anyone that can come either voice.
So do y'all want to do that at 4 o'clock? Do y'all want to set that now and have a public hearing at 4 o'clock?
About 15 minutes before.
Yeah, it won't take that long.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I, I've been a part of some of these, you don't need an hour.
Yeah.
And Genie, Genie with, Genie with Grad, she comes and she presents the project. Uh, there is some work that they've already done and kudos to them. The in-kind work that we do though, and we ask for reimbursement or are part of the share of the grant, grant funding, we can't do after this, until after this grant is approved. So anything we've done is not, so far, it's not retroactive toward that. So we need to keep, keep that in mind. And it could possibly be May 2024 that we even.
Some of these grants take that long. I've got a grant open now that I'm closing right now that it took two years to get the money. So just keep that in consideration because it, it, they literally set up her in Frankfurt for that amount of time just to be signed, yea or nay? So just be prepared on that.
Also, I'd like to appreciate Jason and the city workers, they, they have been up there. They took out all the, the broken equipment, playground equipment, you know, for no kids can, you know, get injured or hurt. We've been doing cleanup, uh, Jeremy Crowe from Oahu County Sports, they've kind of taken over scheduling the ballfields. And I don't know if you guys pass up there now, but there's kids out there on the fields now, you know? So there's getting, slowly but getting life back into Ellis Park. And so it's, to me, that's, that's the heart of our community right there, that part.
And I thank everybody, I thank everybody here in the public. They know the need of it, we've sat on it long enough and let's just take actions and move forward. So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Coleman, do you have anything?
I'm just proud of our police test force. And I'm proud of the maintenance, I say doing, I'm hearing that people are talking about how they, they there when they need them. And our water department, the reason I'm bringing them up, because I'm over them. So I want them to know that the people are talking about the water department when the waters, some of our guys was out there till 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning working. When we need them, they there for us. So I want us to know that, and let our public to know that we here for y'all, whatever you need. And thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Coleman. Stacia, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Jerry, do you have anything? You've been awful quiet over the past day.
Well, I, I don't have a whole lot to say, but I do like some of the things the city's been doing around the city. And I've noticed them and they're doing a good job.
Everybody's doing well. Everybody says how good we're doing, but it's all of our departments that's doing. So, uh, kudos to every one of our departments. So thank you, Jerry. Mary Bell, do you have anything?
Of course I do.
Absolutely.
I'll make a monkey.
I want to give kudos to the gentleman who did the work cleaning up the park. It looks really neat, you know? It is quite delightful to go up there and sit on one of those steps and look around.
It does look really good and, and I have to say Jeff and David and Tony and Jeremy Crowe and city maintenance, it's a joint effort with everybody and, you know, I feel like maybe one of these days soon, we can have a volunteer day and I don't think there would be a problem getting people to help, so.
I'm, I'm like Jerry, I'm proud of what the city's doing. I mean, we've got a new fire truck and that's just a real plus. Police departments adding on policemen, which should have been done. And it's just great.
Yeah.
We've got a mayor that's moving us along.
Tony? All right.
Mayor, I'd like to, I don't know if it was the city or the county or a joint effort, but I'm very, very pleased to finally see, uh, Blacktop paved over on Iron Mountain Road.
Um, that is.
My car is very happy about that.
Yeah, so that is something, um, is in the works too, I will bring y'all forward on this. I do have a bid for that, uh, we put it in the newspaper this week. It'll be at the next meeting. And we have some MRA money that I would like to blacktop from Oakwood to the Y and just re-blacktop from all that section. So that'll be at the next meeting, so. Do I? Yep.
I got a question. I have some old American flags and some military flags of my dad. And we've changed them out. And I know there is a proper way in which, uh, to actually dispose.
Yeah, it's right at the community center, as you walk into the entrance, there, there's a big plastic red flag area. If you give them to me, I can take care of it.
Okay, I was, I was going to say if we had a, a event of a flag day that we can get the community to bring in their old flags.
The local Boy Scouts in conjunction with the VFW usually do that. They have a ceremony and everything, yeah.
Good deal, all right, well, it's already taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
All right, um, if that's everybody, I'll ask for a motion to close this meeting out.
I'll make a motion to close. Please.